Good evening, everyone. It being 7:30 on Tuesday, March 15, 2022, we will begin our town council meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence for all of those who serve in our military, at home and abroad, and for their families.
Thank you. Clerk Samino, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilor Erika.
Here.
Councilor Flaherty.
Here.
Councilor Hume is not attending this evening. Councilor Mackin.
Here.
Councilor Maglio.
Here.
Councilor O'Brien. He's present. Councilor Reynolds.
Present.
Councilor Ringus.
Here.
Councilor Ryan.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Samino. We do have two councilors participating remotely this evening, therefore, all votes will be by roll call. And I'd like to welcome everyone this evening. And we're going to start off with our council announcements. And it is my great delight, in the middle of Women's History Month, to bring forth the second Town Council Women in Leadership Award this evening. And I'm sorry, Councilor Hume can't join us tonight. She conceived of this award and, for many years, was the sole woman on the town council, paving the way for myself, former Councilor Connors, and Councilors Flaherty and Maglio to follow. So for me, and I think many others, this award is meaningful and significant, not the least of which is to provide women and girls across town the chance to see themselves, their work, and their dreams intertwined with our collective success. And I want to also welcome and recognize our past recipients of the Women in Leadership Award who are here with us this evening, Lisa Fisk-Heger and Jen Dolan. So thank you very much for being here. And it's a great pleasure. I'd like to ask Lynn Frano, our Town Substance Use Prevention Coordinator, to share why this year's Women in Leadership Award is going to Robin Houston-Bean. Thank you, Lynn.
So good evening, President Erika and esteemed members of the town council. As some of you know, well, you all know now, Meredith announced it, that my name is Lynn Frano and I am the chairperson of the Braintree Community Partnership. I'm honored to be here with you tonight to present the town council's Women in Leadership Award to my partnership colleague, Robin Houston-Bean. For those of you present or watching at home who don't know Robin Houston-Bean, here is what I know about her. Robin is a wife, a sister, a daughter, an aunt, and a mother of three. She is a respected Braintree businesswoman and an incredibly strong, intelligent, compassionate, and thoughtful person. She and her husband are good parents. They encourage their children to be independent, productive, and they have really instilled strong family values. All of this is important to them because their children matter. In 2015, Robin and her family suffered a great loss when her beautiful 20-year-old son Nicholas died of an accidental opioid overdose. The loss of a child is one of the most painful and difficult things a parent can endure. When an individual is sick with cancer, family, friends, neighbors, and the community often rally in support of the individual and his family. When an individual is lost to overdose, that isn't always the case. Talk to any parent who has lost a son or daughter to overdose. They are acutely aware of the attitudes and beliefs that promote stigma and dehumanize their loved ones with a substance use disorder. When they lost Nicholas to overdose, Robin and her family were heartbroken, and their grief was probably compounded by stigma. Robin found a grief support group in Brighton for parents experiencing loss due to overdose. Although Brighton was not easily accessible, she found great solace and value in the group. And as time passed, she recognized the growing number of social families who, like hers, needed local access to this type of grief support. I thought of Robin when I recently read the words of the late Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who said, "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter." I'm sure at times, Robin felt that her life had ended after the sudden and traumatic loss of Nicholas. But Nicholas's life mattered. He was her son, intelligent, kind, thoughtful, and artistic. She could no longer be silent because Nicholas mattered. So Robin began something truly meaningful. Her venture would help others and would keep the memory of her beloved son Nicholas alive. In December of 2015, Robin founded the Summerill Rise Foundation and held her first peer grief support group right here at Braintree Town Hall. And sadly, because the opioid epidemic has taken the lives of over 2,000 Massachusetts residents, the Summerill Rise Foundation now offers nine grief support groups. Is that right, Robin? Thirteen now, okay. So thirteen grief support groups across the Commonwealth, both in person and in Zoom. You know, they use Zoom now. Robin does so much to increase public awareness about substance use disorder and addiction. She works tirelessly to decrease stigma by fostering and creating spaces for community dialogue through partnerships with many community organizations. She speaks at conferences and programs for prevention and treatment providers, parents, youth, and politicians. With parents, Robin shares the risk factors she feels she missed. With teens, she encourages helping a friend whose substance use may be concerning. Her message is simple: Substance use disorder can happen in any family. Robin is an incredible role model for women and girls of all ages. She has empowered women in her grief support groups to speak publicly and share their stories. She encourages them to remember and memorialize their loved ones as sons, daughters, mothers, fathers, sisters, and brothers, not just a statistic of the opioid epidemic. Robin serves as a role model to her volunteer facilitators, most of whom are women. Through training and encouragement, she has empowered them to facilitate these important grief support groups and broaden their reach, as we know, thirteen groups. Robin organizes activities and fundraising events. I'm sure you're all familiar with her annual Beanstalk event. She does this to raise public awareness about overdose. She organizes local overdose vigils and ceremonies on International Overdose Awareness Day, held each year on August 31st. I'm sure most of you saw the purple flags that were on the fence right outside here of Town Hall in August of 2020 and '21. I don't know if you know this, but each purple flag represented a Massachusetts resident lost to overdose, and each white flag represented a Braintree resident lost to overdose. Robin, in partnership with dozens of local women she has empowered, wants you to know that those 2,000-plus lives matter. In 2019, Robin partnered with the Opioid Project, a group that facilitates community dialogue through workshops and community art exhibitions honoring, contextualizing, and bringing to life the human costs of the opioid epidemic. Robin hosted a workshop for teens that she facilitated here in Braintree at the Community Arts Center. There, she empowered a young girl named Kristen to produce a piece of art with corresponding audio. Kristen was able to share and enjoy memories of her brother in a safe space. Kristen's artwork and audio can be found on the Opioid Project's website and is part of a traveling prevention and education art and audio show to combat stigma. I have barely scratched the surface in terms of Robin's positive impact on women and girls in this community. She has helped alleviate the stigma of substance use disorder and overdose and has spearheaded acts of kindness for our neighbors experiencing homelessness and hunger, many of whom have been touched by trauma and addiction. In closing, I'd like to remind everyone that now more than ever, people are struggling with anxiety and depression, which places people of all ages at risk for substance use and addiction. Tonight, as we honor our neighbor, Robin Houston-Bean, please be mindful that when we judge others for their struggles with mental health and addiction, we promote stigma. And research shows that people who feel stigmatized are less apt to seek help. And with any disease, the earlier it is detected and treated, the better the outcomes will be. Robin Houston-Bean, you are an incredibly modest leader and role model. You have inspired so many women and young girls to find their voices, share their stories, and support one another. We greatly appreciate all you do for this community and beyond. Because of you, Robin, the sun rises for so many. So on behalf of the town council, please accept this Town Council Women in Leadership Award.
Thank you, Lynn.
That was so beautiful. I'm speechless. It's amazing to me, every step that I take affects somebody else. And I didn't realize that when I started to do this work, that that would be the case. But what I hear time and time again is that everything that I do affects someone else and gives them the strength and ability to do something wonderful themselves. So I was listening to a podcast about leadership the other day, and they said there were all these C-words that had to do with leadership. It was confidence, connections, commitment, courage, character, creativity, caring, and competence. And I said, "Those are all so true. But to be a good leader, you need someone else to help you with all of those things." So I couldn't be the leader that I am today without everybody else that's been behind me, my family, my sister Olivia John, Lynn in the partnership, my good friend Heather, my other friends that are my Braintree friends, and then I call them my grief friends, a community that I've built that I needed so badly. It is true that not a lot of people usually bring casseroles when you tell them you have a child that is addicted. We were not able to tell anybody at the time that Nick had an issue because he was self-imposing, silenced upon himself because he was embarrassed that he had an addiction. When he died, I said, "We're not going to be silent anymore." And my friends came over with casseroles to support me. They understood that we were a good family, that addiction can happen to anybody. And even if you're not a perfect family and you do your best, addiction can still enter that household. Nick thought he would be judged. But I know now that if he had told us, my community would not have judged him. It's not the same for everyone that I deal with in my grief groups. We now have over 700 people that attend our grief support groups. And unfortunately, they do not live in a community like Braintree and don't have the support that I do. But what we try to do is give them everything that I was given by everybody else. So I just want to say thank you to Meredith and Shannon, the other ladies and gentlemen on the town council, the people behind the town council, for bringing this award forth. It takes strong women to bring up strong women. And if we keep being great examples for the younger women, they'll do wonderful things. I can't wait to see, someday, this whole thing may be filled with just women. I don't know, Joe, you better watch out. But I do. I just, I thank you so much for this. And I hope that I continue to make the town of Braintree proud and that we continue to work together to stop the stigma and make Braintree an accepting place for everybody, no matter what their disease, mental issues, or anything else is. So thank you so much.
Hold on, Robin. We have your certificate, and I would love to ask you to join the council for a photograph. But I'd just like to read you and to everyone, "The Braintree Town Council in recognition of Robin Houston-Bean is recognized by the Braintree Town Council as the 2022 Women in Leadership Award Honoree for displaying intelligence, deep thought, and making impactful change, for serving as a role model for women and girls of all ages." So thank you, Robin, for all you do. All right, thank you, Robin, again. And thank you to everyone for being here tonight and our past recipients. This is the good stuff. So with that, we will move on to our next announcement, which is Councilor Flaherty will provide us with a Master Plan Steering Committee update.
Well, thank you. The Master Plan Steering Committee has had its kickoff meeting in February. And it was fabulous to finally feel like we're getting moving with a project that has taken a long time to get moving because of COVID and other things. But there has been some good, we're off to a good start. First of all, the selection committee has selected a consultant by the name of J.M. Goldson. And she's wonderful. And she took an opportunity at our last meeting to kind of introduce us to her company and to her experience with master plans in other communities and to invite us to share some details about our vision for how this process would go and further to educate everyone about what is and sometimes isn't involved in the master plan process and why. So one of the things that she had members of the steering committee complete was a worksheet in which we were asked to identify our hopes, some questions that we have, and the challenges that we see for the committee. Because we are in something called Phase One, which is the discovery and existing conditions phase. And so this part of the process is when we sort of take a good look at the lay of the land as it is. And that started for us with this worksheet. And it was a wonderful way to get a chance to really focus in on what you hope to achieve. It's a big process. So what do we hope to achieve? And she gave us a summary of the points. And the good news is that we had some real alignment in terms of what we wanted Braintree to get out of the process, what we saw as our hopes, the questions that we had, and the challenges. So briefly, I'll summarize what she shared with us. And the first point she made was that we wanted to be an inclusive project, to have engagement accurately reflect the interests of the community by having all facets of the community come forward and be a part of the process. That was the first thing she listed. I think it is a deeply held conviction of all the members of the steering committee. And I do invite all of Braintree to come out when the time comes to share your perspective on the different angles that the master plan is going to examine. She also talked about a broad wish that we will come through this with the creation of a blueprint with specific action items for Braintree to take going forward, kind of a bit of a roadmap, not too binding or too specific, but like something to really give scaffolding to the direction that we want Braintree to take. And then the last point that she made was that we have asked for Braintree to really engage in an analysis of how to balance different needs for the town, how to balance development against sustainability, how to balance the needs of residents with the needs of businesses, how to balance the need to have a tax base that is broad enough to use for us to provide services to our residents without overburdening our residents with property tax. These issues of balance were sort of threaded through everybody's comments. And she could not leave out the need for us to balance traffic against everything else. So if you are a person who wants to follow this process digitally, there's more and more opportunity for you to do that. If you look on the town website, there is a link under the mayor's department for the Master Plan Steering Committee. And if you look at that link, you can click on it, and there is a series of documents, our old master plan, a link to the slide deck that we looked at in the first kickoff meeting that we had, and other materials, including a schedule of anticipated meetings. So I'm not going to list every meeting, but you can mark your calendars for the next one, which will be on March 24. It will be here in Cahill Auditorium at 7:00 p.m., and you are all invited to join us. And if you have any questions, I am the town council representative on the Master Plan Steering Committee, along with Councilor Reynolds. You can also contact Melissa Santucci-Razi in the planning department. Or if you look on the website, there is a list of all the other members of the Master Plan Steering Committee, and you can reach out to them as well. I'm sure they'd be happy to hear from you.
Thank you very much, Councilor Flaherty. Long awaited, I know, for many of us in the community. All right, are there other announcements from councilors this evening? Councilor Reynolds?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make the announcement of recognition of Remembrance Day for our Vietnam War veterans. That's March 29. As part of that celebration or that remembrance, the Old Colony Hospice and Palliative Care Facility, which is located just down the road here in Washington Street, they'll be having a Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans opportunity for families and veterans to meet with other veterans, share stories, socialize. And they are asking to bring your families, your friends, other folks in the community to show their respect and remembrance for those who served this country during that terrible war. So that will be Tuesday, March 29. And the drop-in will be between 10:00 a.m. and 11:30 a.m. at the American Legion Post. That is, the event will be held at the American Legion Post 86 at 435 Washington Street, Braintree. So we hope to see you all there and to join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Reynolds. Any other announcements this evening? Councilor Maglio.
I have two brief announcements. The first one is I came across a wonderful event that is being called the Incredible Inclusion Walk, which is on Friday, April 1, at Braintree High School. And it's for students and for their families and for others from the community. So I imagine that you can find more information about that on the BHS website, as well as watching perhaps the school committee or the student council. The other announcement is with regard to the compressor station. Recently, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, FERC, which is the body that regulates the compressor, they made a decision at a meeting in January that the compressor station should not have been authorized to be built where it was built. And they called that cold comfort to the people of Waymouth, Braintree, and Quincy because they're not actually going to shut it down. So there are some rumors or some bits of information out there where people have heard this and are under the impression that it was shut down. No, it was not shut down. FRACs, the Four River Residents Against the Compressor Station, is hard at work on the legal front in hopes of shutting it down. And I would encourage everyone to follow them on social media to stay tuned for efforts that you can be involved in to help shut down the compressor that has been determined that it shouldn't have been licensed, but yet it still is operating. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Maglio. Any other announcements this evening? All right. Oh, sorry, go ahead. Thank you. Go ahead, Councilor Flaherty.
Sustainable Braintree would like people to know that they have a Zoom meeting on April 14. It is, however, not a conventional Sustainable Braintree meeting. They will be hosting a speaker. Her name is Kristen Nicholson, and she is of the Blue Stem Natives in Norwell. Because Sustainable Braintree is hoping that Braintree residents can learn more about native plants and why they're important for you in your yard and also the problem of non-native plants in our wildlife and maybe develop some thinking about how we can begin to combat that problem. So you're all invited. If you would like to find the link, you can find it on Sustainable Braintree's website or on their Facebook page when it is posted. But April 14, 7:00 to 8:30, in your slippers, at home, on the computer.
Thank you very much. All right, with that, I think we can move on to our approval of minutes for February 1, 2022. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved, Madam President.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilors Ringus and Flaherty. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please.
Councilor Erika.
Yes.
Councilor Flaherty?
Aye.
Councilor Hume is not attending. Councilor Mackin?
Aye.
Councilor Maglio?
Aye.
Councilor O'Brien?
Aye.
Councilor Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilor Ringus?
Aye.
Councilor Ryan?
Aye.
Eight in favor, one absent. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no old business and no new business this evening. So we just get to celebrate our great announcements. So with that, I'd like to move on to the referrals. Councilor Ringus?
Thank you, Madam President. I would move to refer to the Committee on Ordinance and Rules, 2201 Landing Apartments LLC zoning petition, amendment to the Table of Principal Uses, Section 135-601, or take up any action relative thereto, and as well as 22012 Mayor zoning bylaw text amendment, inclusionary housing, and associated revisions, or taking up any action relative thereto.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilors Ringus and Flaherty. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please.
Councilor Erika?
Yes.
Councilor Flaherty?
Aye.
Councilor Hume is not attending. Councilor Mackin?
Aye.
Councilor Maglio?
Aye.
Councilor O'Brien?
Aye.
Councilor Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilor Ringus?
Aye.
Councilor Ryan?
Aye.
That's eight in favor and one absent.
Madam President, I'd also move to refer to the Committee on the Department of Public Works, 22014 National Grid Petition, that at 22 to 111 Parkside Ave, or take up any action relative thereto, as well as 22016 National Grid Petition, Sampson Avenue, or take up any action relative thereto.
Second? Thank you, Councilors Ringus and Flaherty. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please.
Councilor Erika?
Yes.
Councilor Flaherty?
Yes.
Councilor Hume is not attending. Councilor Mackin?
Aye.
Councilor Maglio?
Aye.
Councilor O'Brien?
Aye.
Councilor Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilor Ringus?
Aye.
Councilor Ryan?
Aye.
That's eight in favor, one absent.
And, Madam President, I would move to refer to the Committee on Ways and Means, a 22017 Mayor Authorization to Enter into a Tax Increment Financing Agreement for Property Located at 400 Wood Road, or Taking Up Any Action Relative thereto, 22018 Mayor Authorization to Accept Donations or Take Up Any Action Relative thereto, and 22019 Mayor Request for Appropriation, CPA Appropriation, Nathan Belega Park and Street Hockey Rink, or Take Up Any Action Relative thereto.
Thank you, Councilors Ringus and Flaherty. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please.
Councilor Erika?
Yes.
Councilor Flaherty?
Aye.
Councilor Hume is not attending. Councilor Mackin?
Aye.
Councilor Maglio?
Aye.
Councilor O'Brien?
Aye.
Councilor Reynolds?
Aye.
Counselor Ringus?
Aye.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
That's eight in favor, one absent.
Thank you very much. And with that, our next meeting will be on Tuesday, April 5th, 2022, at 7:30 PM. Thank you, as always, to the B-CAM team, Wes Ray, Bill Needham, and Jerry Komic for always getting us on camera and live streaming on B-CAM for our residents. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
Thank you, Councilors Ringus and Flaherty. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Barica?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty?
Aye.
Counselor Hume is not attending. Counselor Mackin?
Aye.
Counselor Maglio?
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien? To adjourn, Counselor O'Brien?
Aye.
Thank you. Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
Counselor Ringus?
Aye.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
All in favor to adjourn.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.